Good morning. I would like to call to order the October 10th Business Meeting of the Clackamas County Commission. Administrator Schmidt, please call the roll.
Yes, Chair. First, our staff support today, Stephen Madcore, County Council, Mary Rathke, Clerk to the Board. Chair Bernard is out of the office today, so Commissioner Fisher will be serving as Chair of the meeting. Roll call, Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Chair Fisher.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. I believe first we will close as the Clackamas County Commission and open as the Clackamas County Housing Authority. And with that, Administrator Schmidt, please lead us through.
Yes, the first item today, Commissioners, is a public hearing on the proposed amendment to the 2019-2020 Housing Authority of Clackamas County Annual Plan. Jill Smith, Housing Authority Director, will present.
Thank you. Good morning, Jill.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jill Smith, Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Clackamas County. I'm here to hold a public hearing, with your help, of course, on proposed changes, mid-year changes, to our annual plan. Housing authorities are required to have an annual plan that is updated yearly, as well as a five-year plan. As a heads up, the next July 1st, our five-year plan will be due to HUD. So unfortunately, we'll be starting to work on that probably at the beginning of the year. There are certain things that require an amendment to your annual plan, and it's anything that would impact the disposition or development of public housing, or a change in income or program requirements for the families that participate in the public housing or the Housing Choice Voucher programs, which is why we're here, just to give the public the opportunity to hear about these and to tell us about their perception of these The first step in this process was, of course, for us to decide what changes we felt needed to be made, but then it was, these changes were all discussed with our Resident Advisory Board. The RAB is made up of residents from public housing and Section 8 programs. That was done on July 30th. Then we published a notice talking about all the proposed amendments. Those were published for comments between August 1st, 2019, through September 15th. The proposed amendments were also posted and available in the Administrative Office at the Housing Authority, in our property management offices, in the Oak Grove Library, and it was also posted on the Housing Authority website. So this is our next step, and following this step and any changes that you propose as a result of this public hearing, we hope to present the amended plan changes to you for adoption next week on October 17th on consent. And with that, I'd just like to do a very brief overview of the proposed changes, and then we can open it up for comments or questions. The first change was a, the first proposed change, excuse me, was a result of HUD requesting this. As you know, we are in the process of transitioning out of our public housing program for the Hillside Park property and the Hillside Manor property. Our existing plan says that we will use Section 18 and that we may use RAB. Both of those are tools that HUD provides you to transition out of public housing. HUD specifically requested that we add the word "blend" because we're requesting a new tool, which is a Section 18 RAB blend. RAB is Rent Assistance Demonstration. It's a formula that allows you to blend those two tools. It's much more lucrative to the Housing Authority as it comes with vouchers for the tenants that are in place. RAB alone does not. So it's very important that we add that word, and the HUD can approve us proceeding with that application. Beyond that change, we have a few other changes that we're proposing that we make. This one applies to both the Housing Choice Voucher, or Section 8 voucher program, and the public housing program. We want to eliminate a hack requirement that the Housing Authority imposes on their residents and their participants, that every three months they come in for an income review, if they reported not having income. Families are already required to report any changes in income without us doing that administrative work. HUD does not require that level of administrative work, so it is an additional burden on the Housing Authority and doesn't change. Well, it actually reduces burden and impact on families. The second proposed change applies to both the Housing Choice Voucher program and public housing. It's a change in the way the Housing Authority processes increases in income and increases in rent for people that are participating in both programs. HUD gives you an option, let's say a family, every year they have a total review and recertification of their income and their household members, and you use that information to calculate their rent. HUD gives you the option to hold off on increasing a family's rent if, say, they were to get a job six months between their annual review date. You're allowed to hold off and impose that increase on them at the point of the next annual review. Currently, the Housing Authority has chosen to immediately increase their rent. I am proposing that we wait until the annual, giving the family time to stabilize, adapt to their new requirements of having work, and it benefits the family tremendously because there is a well-known benefit cliff that impacts people trying to become more self-sufficient. Their food stamps go down, their rent goes up, daycare gets cut. The more income you make, the less services you receive. So this would work as, not only an administrative reduction, but a way to incent increased income by the people we're serving. I'm also proposing that we make a change on the policy which governs the way that we establish our rents for project-based vouchers. So a project-based voucher is a voucher that's attached to a unit, so it's no longer portable, it's attached to a unit, and we've committed 200 of these to the Metro bond. I am proposing that we have one formula to establish the maximum rent that would be set on that unit. Right now, there are two, and to be transparent, you get, right now, the verbiage allows a higher rent to be established if there's public housing dollars in the development. And to be fair and consistent, we're just going to have one methodology across the board. So as developers come in with proposals for the bond, I think we're treating everyone the same. I'm trying to eliminate those two different formulas. The formula would be that we pay the lower of three different options, which usually ends up being where we set our payment standards, which is the maximum amount someone can receive for rent for a unit. So it's actually pretty, this is a pretty impactful proposal. I also anticipate we'll be coming back to you to amend this as we get further into the bond, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our developers. The final proposed change allows the Housing Authority to pay overlapping rent assistance payments during the move process. This has always been allowed by HUD, as have all of these changes that I'm proposing. This makes it much easier on a family who's extremely low-income, who's trying to move, and they find a unit that's ready to move into on the 25th of the month. And we would then, because we are paying for the current unit through the 30-day notice through the 30th of the month, we have not allowed overlapping payments. So that family would have to figure out how to pay for those five days or six days till they could move into the new unit and leave the other on their own. It has actually resulted in some families becoming homeless because they can't figure out how to get the deposit, the application fees, as well as pay for like maybe a whole additional amount of a week of rent without our help. So these are, they seem like minimal changes when you look at them, but they really impact people's lives. And that's all of the proposed changes.
Great. I believe we have some questions. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, I do have one question, not quite related to this, but I've been expecting a phone call here shortly that I may have to take. And so if I leave, I'll be back. But related to your presentation, Jill, I do have a couple of questions. So on the deferring, if you will, my term of the rents, and looked at on an annual basis, are there any scenarios where seasonal employment may cause some interruption and extra paperwork? And do you have a means to cope with that?
Seasonal employment is a challenge. And generally, what you do is if you see that's been ongoing and regular, that they have seasonal employment, every year it's pretty standard. What HUD recommends and what we do to reduce administrative costs is you annualize that based on the last year, and you would make the assumption, if you see that pattern, that that's what they'll make for the whole year.
So is your revision recognize that? And is, are there, is the policy changes you're suggesting be able to address that without any conflict?
That, yes. That language is already in our plan.
Okay. The other question I had is that are, is the changes you're suggesting in totality compliant with the federal assistance requirements in the aspect? I guess my concern, it maybe rolls in the second question, which I'll throw at you now, and that is, like moving expenses, does that drain our resources, or is it more a drain on the federal resource funds? When we talk about moving expenses or waiving or deferring any rent changes? I mean, whose resources are being tapped?
So we're not covering any moving expenses. We're just allowing us to pay the housing assistance payment overlapping by a few days while they give their proper notice and then might have to move into the new unit when it's ready for the landlord to approve them. It's minimal, minimal amounts of money. And tremendous savings for the Housing Authority. All of these things that I've explained, we are spending more money on administrative cost to conduct some of these, like every three months having somebody in to question them. The cost associated with the benefit for that is tremendous.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Humberston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Going back to when folks get an increase in their wages. I know you've had programs in some areas of the housing network that encourage people to save money. And I like the idea that you're not going to have somebody immediately have their rent go up. It gives them a chance to adjust to the new realities that they're going to be dealing with. Is it possible to use one of your existing programs to encourage people in that scenario, it's not seasonal, but actually a regular increase in their wages, to save some money? Obviously, where possible, we like people to become more self-reliant, and becoming self-reliant, among other things, requires you to have the discipline to save money so that when you have an emergency or another need, you'd be capable of dealing with it to some degree. So is there a way for you to encourage that in that window of time?
That's a great question, and that's exactly what the staff asked when I proposed this change. And yes, there is. We're going to put together a letter and some programming to help support people to understand this is a huge opportunity, take advantage of it. And there's actually two programs that we are going to propose. One is our Self-Sufficiency Program, where people who are able to work, HUD funds this program. As their wages increase, as their rent goes up, in accordance, their rent goes up to 30% of whatever their income is. So as their rent goes up, that rent increase amount is set aside into a savings account for them. So it's a huge incentive, and after five years, they receive that money. Some people buy a home, before homes were so expensive, a lot more people did. They can use that how they wish. If it were up to me, everybody would have the opportunity to be on that program. Only 4% of the people we serve have the opportunity. We also have an IDA program, which is a savings incentive program that the state gives us spaces into, Individual Development Account. When people make a monthly deposit into that account, you match it three to one, and at the end of three years, they can use it to start their own business, buy a house, purchase a car. And it seems like there's one more that's not coming to my mind.
I'd like to participate in that program.
Yeah, me too. It's a great program, and we are trying to get more spaces. We also have limited spaces for people, but moving forward, we're going to be creative and try to create more of these internally.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing, and I believe we have one person signed up to talk, and that's Arnold. And Arnold, you're going to have to help me with your last name.
Rodacker.
Rodacker. Come on up and let us know what, yeah, and state your name into the microphone and where you're from, and thank you for being here this morning.
My name's Arnold Rodacker, and I live in public housing. And I also am, was at that meeting because I'm on the representative, you know, for the neighborhood board. So there's two things that I'm concerned with. The first thing that I'm concerned with is that at this last meeting that we were in and met, I talked to the Housing Authority about communicating with people. You know why this room is empty? This room is empty because the deadline for the 15th, nobody has any knowledge of this meeting until the 27th of this month. It came in the week, in the monthly flyer, or the three-month flyer. Nobody knows about this meeting because it's over with. You can't put written information, any kind of comments, anything, because the deadline is gone. It died on the 15th. So once again, I'm coming back and asking them, send flyers out to people so they know what's going on. It's a big issue. You can't ask people to come to someplace that they don't know what's going on. That is, you know, I understand that they have a big job, they're overwhelmed, probably overwhelmed with all the stuff they have to handle, but now they're proposing changes. I know about the changes because I was at the meeting, but anybody that wasn't there does not know anything about it because the information that was to be provided to them had no notification until the 27th of last month. And it's a big issue because if you don't communicate with the people that live there, how can they contribute to part of the proceedings? You know, that was, the main reason I came here was to talk to you, you know, let you know that this is an ongoing problem, that if you're making a budget, maybe you need to make a little bigger budget. I know you guys are tight on money, but you know, it's not fair to the residents to not know that this meeting's going on, or being able to put their input on these changes. And therefore, I don't believe it's fair that they come back next week and front you with these changes until they notify the residents. I'm not trying to slow down the process, but I would believe it should be a fair process for everybody.
Okay. Anything else? Any specific input on the changes that you might have?
Now, okay, so the IDA, oh, sorry. The IDA program is really a great program, except for one problem. If you're low-income, and you have more than $2,000 of income anywhere, you lose your medical, you lose your food stamps, you lose all your benefits. So people cannot save money. So one hand's cutting off the other. That's what the ceiling is. So if somebody puts $1,000 in, they put $2,000 in, they just lost all their benefits.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm going to call you. Jill, would you do us a favor and respond to those questions?
Thank you for your comments. I appreciate it. I'm still fairly new, so hearing from you really helps me to understand the needs of the residents. HUD, we did comply with HUD's requirements on notices and working with the residents. The Resident Advisory Board is, the way that HUD has set this up is they are to represent the residents, and when we share proposed changes with them, we have people from across, well, you know, because you're there, a cross-section of folks from Section 8 programs and from public housing programs. And if there's real concerns, we try to make amendments before we get to this point when we first hear from the residents. We also posted it in public places, like a library, and in the Oregonian, and on our website. I don't think flyers were handed out like you suggested. Most of our residents are in scattered sites, so there's not really, the manor's the one exception. So I think moving forward, we can certainly be more diligent about posting, maybe a poster or flyers in the manor, in a more timely manner. But we were compliant with HUD requirements as far as notification.
And about the Individual Development Accounts?
About the IDA account. That's a state-regulated program, and I hear you. I think that you're spot on. That's partly why we're making the changes, the proposed changes to the interim, because the benefits cliff, that's a benefits cliff issue. As soon as people start doing better and becoming more stable and independent, all of our resources are kind of cut off for folks.
Okay. So that's $2,000 in an IDA, and you lose your Medicaid and other?
Social Security and, yeah, Medicaid.
Thank you for highlighting that. And I know Commissioner Savis has a question or a comment.
Yeah, well, thank you, Mr. Rodacker. I was listening to your issue, and I believe that Commissioner Fisher helped identify one of my questions, and that is, is there a concern? I think we just aired that. But your first point about the notice in public, and it sounds like you're on a committee, putting public notice in public meetings, and how we notify people is important to me. And as a matter of fact, as part of the topic I want to talk about today under Commissioner Communications, but not about your particular situation. But as a member of the committee that you cited you're on.
Advisory Board.
Advisory Board. Do you feel that you've, were able, had an active opportunity as a member and the members of the group to communicate any concerns that you articulated on this? And do you have any, is there anyone in your unit? Are you at the Hillside Manor?
Yes.
Is there anyone that's active in kind of notifying? You know, there's always like an active citizen or two that are out there telling everyone what's going on and creating a little bit of a buzz. I mean, do you have that kind of a system or a membership that's actively keeps everyone, you know, notified or aware of things as they happen?
No, there isn't, and I'll tell you why. Because living in where we live at, I know this is televised on TV, and I don't really care, it's a gossip center. You tell somebody one thing, and it changes 10 times by the time it gets to everybody in the neighborhood. That's why, you know, I'm proposing that, you know, I was there, I was there for that meeting, and yes, I'm the representative for them. But the thing is, I still feel that the people should have been notified. If I wasn't on the advisory board, or if I wouldn't have got this newsletter, I would have known, because I don't know how to use a computer. I don't know how to go to the library and get that information. I had no notification, well, I had notification that it would eventually be in the office, but not when. So what I'm saying is there's a communication problem here. You know, communicate with your tenants on these kind of issues. I mean, these are great issues that they're bringing up and great changes, but it's just like, we meet two times a year, and there's some turnout, but not very much turnout to the advisory board meetings. And that's because if the tenants knew that this thing was going on, if they were given a flyer, maybe you would get more people in, you know, to give you more ideas. And so therefore, it's kind of like, well, I went to the meeting, they talked to me, I talked to them, and it had died there. That was the end of it.
So one solution might be at those meetings to actually provide the flyers for the residents themselves, who are part of the board, to go and share with their, the folks that they interact with, so they have the accurate information with the right time, and it's not word of mouth, and that might be another way to, besides posting things and...
So the issue is, with this, with that idea, is that not all residents speak English, understand what we say. They have to be in two or, maybe two or three different languages. I couldn't go talk to them because they don't understand what I'm saying, and I don't understand what they're saying.
Yeah.
So if the flyers were put out, I know this, like I said, I know it costs money, but if the flyers were put out like in their own.
Yeah.
Language, then there would be more understanding. You know what I'm saying? There would be more input maybe in your meetings, and maybe some of the people don't want to be part of it, but maybe some of them do.
Yeah, well, I really appreciate you bringing this to our attention, and that we have a Public and Government Affairs Department, which helps our staff with community outreach. And so we have put a check, I'm looking at our county administrator, who's nodding his head, and we will look into this to see what will be possible for the next round of changes. And before we move on, I know Commissioner Humberston? Are you not, oh, you're not, sorry.
I wasn't, I wasn't finished.
Oh, sorry.
If I could. So thank you for your response, and I just presume at this point that all of these changes were beneficial to the clientele and the residents there. So I appreciate that. I think there's always room for improvement on notification, and perhaps, I think, that if we're doing the notifying, that the message is consistent, as opposed to maybe relying upon, be able to pass the word, and as you kind of identify, that that message can be confused or mixed up by the time it hits 10 people or more, so, or less. So it might be an area for, again, for improvement, so we'll look into that.
Can I have a couple more minutes? I have another issue on this.
Just real quick, because we have more public comment.
The voucher system. Okay. The voucher system that they're setting up because they want to tear down where we live and move. It's, from my understanding, is that they will pay to help us move to wherever we go to and stuff. But the issue is now that if they, even though you're the federal government, you can't control what landlords do. So the new law, the new law was passed through that any building that's 15 hours, 15 years or newer, is exempt from no-cause evictions. So therefore, you have to, they have to find old buildings for us to move into, and then after the 12 months, if the landlord don't want you there, he just throws you out. I've seen it happen to 100, and this is a big problem.
Yeah.
They just, they, we don't need a reason. We're telling you, you have to move. We don't want you here anymore.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, but Jill, can you address that as really, and quickly, because we do need to move on, but as to how we are approaching that with the planning that we're doing for Hillside?
So I think, do you reside in the manor?
No, I, no.
You're in the park?
I'm in the houses.
You're in the park? Okay.
Yes.
Yes. You will have an option to, you'll have the first option to return to the new units that are rebuilt in the park, and those will be affordable housing. So affordable housing, there's never the ability for a landlord, if you're living in affordable housing, for them to give you a no-cause eviction. It's illegal in affordable housing. It's not something that any of those buildings there will be able to do. So we would welcome you and hope you would come back. Landlord-tenant law is much, it's much better now than it was before all the new changes, but I agree, there's still, there's still a ways to go. We will, if you do decide that you want We will, if you do decide that you want to move out and stay out with a voucher, that's also your option, but I just want to reassure you that you'll be, you'll have first option to come back, and you'll have greater protections in affordable housing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And Arnold, just one thing before you go. One thing that I would commit to, and I'm sure some of my colleagues would join me, if you would like us to come out, just the commission, and come and do a listening session, hang out with you, just engage and have a conversation, I think we would be happy to do that with your fellow residents. So let's work on that. Because hearing directly from you is the most important communication that we can have as we make decisions. And I really appreciate you being here, so thank you very much.
Okay. I have one other thing. I know I'm taking up your time. The other issue is that if they tear the houses down and they transfer you to another place, you know, temporarily, if you're there there more than 12 years, I mean, 12 years, 12 months, you're automatically considered transferred, and you're not eligible to go back to housing. I mean, not to that, to that project.
Well, you will be eligible through the, this transition plan. That we will make sure of.
Okay. Well, I'm just, just...
Yes.
That's why I came today to talk to you guys about this stuff because...
No, I think that's really important, and I think, Jill, we may want to spend some more time talking with the residents so that we just, because if you're feeling that way, then others are too, so we really need to do that. And we are happy to engage in that process. So thank you so much. And with that, I'm going to ask Anna Geller to come on up, who also would like to testify on this.
My name is Anna Geller, and I develop affordable housing here in Clackamas County and run some social services programs in the neighborhood of North Clackamas County, unincorporated. Essentially, I saw this quite recently, the policy changes, and...
Can you, would you please speak out, please?
Yes, I'll try. Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't want to be overbearing, but there's a microphone. So I looked at them recently, and I was relieved. And I think you really, I really hope you're going to support these, particularly since Jill Smith has told me, in unusual circumstances, particularly when we're trying to help homeless people right coming off the street, amendments can be made, you know, there can be some flexibility. But in general, these changes that she's proposing really are just the beginning of getting rid of the cobwebs and dusting everything off, making things more efficient, and to my way of thinking, really helping residents who are either struggling with illness and, you know, myriad doctor appointments and lots of time consuming things like that, or they're really struggling to find employment. And if they're not having to go every three months, or, you know, all of these sort of extra activities, well beyond even what the federal government requires, that gives them more opportunity to succeed. So I think this is a beginning of efficiency. It will save the Housing Authority money, just in staff time, and I think it's going to really help Section 8 residents. So I completely support it and hope to see more in this spirit. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. With that, if there aren't any other questions or comments, or anybody else would like to speak on this matter, I will close the public hearing. And I believe we are now then moving on to the consent agenda.
You want to make the announcement real quick?
There's no board action.
Yeah, right here.
Oh, make, oh, sorry about that. I did not read my script. I thought I just knew what I was doing. Announcing that, I'm announcing that there is no board action on this item today. The item will come back before the board on October 17th, 2019, at our regular scheduled business meeting at 10:00 a.m. All right. And with that, close the public hearing and move on to the consent agenda.
The Housing Authority Consent Agenda. Approval of a contract between the Housing Authority and Do Good Multnomah to provide supportive services for family living in the Clayton Moore Commons. And approval to execute a contract between the Housing Authority and Portland Real Estate Solutions, doing business as Portland Construction Solutions, for modernization of a public housing unit. That concludes today's Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
All right. Does any member of the commission wish to remove an item? Any comments or questions?
I just have one. I may have been distracted because my phones are going crazy here. Did we actually announce that we were recessing as the BCC?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
That was all I had.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for holding us to the fire, Commissioner Savis. And with that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Housing Authority Consent Agenda.
Second. It's been moved in second, and all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion is approved. And with that, we will adjourn as the Board of the Housing Authority and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds.
Thank you.
And we will move on to citizen communication.
Excuse me. Is that right? Never mind.
And I have Ron Fullerton, and is it Lee? No. Just, I... Oh, wait, no, sorry.
He just stepped out and went to the bathroom.
Okay, Lee's not up yet. We just have Ron Fullerton.
Yes, but he stepped out to the bathroom.
Okay. Well, then we will move on to, is that all right, to move on? We only have one citizen communication? We will move on to the...
The lady present says she can do it on his behalf, if that's acceptable.
Well, if you'd like.
I think it's his wife.
Okay. Mary, you?
Yes.
So you can either, you can either do citizen communication now, we can go on to the next agenda item and come back to citizen communication.
I was going to move on and then come back.
It'll take a while. The next item is going to take a while. Okay. Let me do this.
Okay.
Sorry, I forgot.
All right, good morning.
Good morning. Thanks for letting me come.
Of course.
My name is Cheryl Fullerton, and I live out in unincorporated area of Aurora, Oregon. Oh, there he is.
He can just sit down next to you. Yeah. Ron, we were calling you up and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I thought you were gone.
I couldn't believe that other item was that short.
That short, yeah, me either.
Good morning.
Yeah.
Did you say anything?
I just said my name and where I'm from.
We're concerned about the STR situation because apparently our next-door neighbor on August 1st started renting his house as an Airbnb, and he has a relatively large home with a outdoor swimming pool. So we're concerned about the noise factor. People have been checking in at 10, 11 o'clock at night, cars speeding up and down his long driveway. People, he doesn't stay there when there are renters. So people are inviting others to use the pool at all hours of the night. And like most people that move to the country on acreage, we didn't actually move to the country to live next door to a hotel, in particular, an unsupervised hotel. Airbnb says that, and there's information that you're required to notify the neighbors, but that didn't happen. And then Airbnb is not very helpful as far as ever contacting them. You know, our feeling is that if people want additional income from rentals, they should actually buy rentals in areas that are zoned for rentals. And in this day and age of cellphones, there's no way of necessarily even contacting them. And if people turn off their cellphone number and you try to call at 1:00 or 2:00 in the morning, the chances are you're not going to get help. And we also worry a little bit about the decrease in value of our house or other people's homes that have Airbnbs or other short-term rentals next to them. I don't feel like that just because everybody is doing it, it's necessary for the county to authorize this sort of behavior. Hopefully, we have a lot of, or you have a lot of zoning options to consider. I noticed in the statement that was mailed out, or that we got a copy of, that you could create zones like around Mount Hood where there's already a lot of existing rentals. You could also zone to already commercial areas rather than residential areas or agricultural areas. And then I was very concerned about the mention of self-reporting as an option for taking care of code violations that may result in unsafe living arrangements for guests. In other words, it may be necessary for you to tax them at a higher rate and set up some sort of a department to actually go out and look at, supervise these places for health and safety, fencing for pools that meet hotel motel standards. Do they have insurance for this, for renters? How about access for emergency vehicles? And what about other code violations? I don't think self-reporting is going to be a particularly safe option for residents near their place or for the guests. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming and sharing with us, Commissioner Savis.
I just appreciate you coming and expressing. Now, you kind of really touched on really the core of the challenges we face on this topic, and to some degree, a lot of these things are weekend rentals often, and people show up on the weekend and, you know...
Friday night at 10:00 p.m.
Right. And the person who's maybe not following code or being misbeh, you know, is gone by Monday morning, and so, you know, a person like yourself or neighboring residents can make a call on Monday, but it's too late, right?
Yeah.
And it's not, really not an effective means, and so we have considerable financial constraints that the county is facing, and really don't have the means to actually add a lot of, whether it's policing or regulations or all the things you kind of mentioned, to watch this. So it is, it's a conundrum, and I think we've got to be mindful of people like yourselves, normal tax-paying citizens who live nearby, that their quality of life is not interrupted any further. So you have my sympathy, and I think that's something that we're wrangling with, and stay tuned, because we're working on this quite well. And I want to make sure that we get at the very core of how this came to be, how we came to put this STR, which is short-term rentals for those who are listening. And that is, it's been really driven by complaints, legitimate complaints like yourself. And if we go through this whole process of regulating them or registering them or allowing them and not addressing, you know, a realistic means of addressing the issues you have when Friday night hits or Saturday night occurs, then we haven't done our job.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Savis. Commissioner Humberson?
Yeah, like, like most land use issues, there's no, there's no perfect answer. You have people on the, on one side that think they should be able to do anything they want with their property, no matter what it is, and regardless of its impact on others. And then you have people on the other end that want to tell everybody what to do, how to do it, when to do it, where to do it, who's allowed to do it and who's not. So somewhere in the middle, you try to find, for lack of a better term, some sort of a sweet spot to try and deal with the problem. The fact is, is it wasn't a big problem until the advent of Airbnbs and things of that nature, because it was mostly by word-of-mouth, passed on over generations, mostly in areas like up on the mountain and things like that. So what we're trying to do now is figure out how we can best manage it, because it's there and it's not going to go away. So to do nothing isn't the solution. So I'll just paraphrase a little bit of what Commissioner Savis said. We're going to try to figure out the best way for this to occur, get revenue from this process so that we can do some more enforcement on issues that impact you and other neighbors like yourself. Unfortunately, there's no perfect solution to this. We cannot just go and say completely no, because what, it will still occur. It's not, it's already not, quote, legal or illegal, it's just there. And obviously, a free-for-all is not an answer either. So we will try to find some kind of a solution that gets some enforcement on some of the bad players and minimize the problems for neighbors, so.
It's difficult, it's difficult to, you know, as I went through the bullet points on the thing that you put out, you know, it says the sheriff will, the sheriff will, the sheriff will. Well, I had a, I had a break-in that probably $5,000 or $6,000 worth of ammunition was stolen, yet the sheriffs didn't come out. I mean, they did show up when I told them that a large amount of ammo was stolen, but they didn't fingerprint the place and they didn't pursue it. So, I mean, they don't have, apparently don't have the staff to do the job that they, you might suspect that they currently should do, let alone enforce all these other things.
Really appreciate you coming, and I for one, if you wouldn't mind giving us a copy of all the points you made in your testimony, I would really appreciate having that
Thank you.
...in writing. So thank you so much. And with that, we are adjourning as the Board of County Commissioners and opening as the Board of Health, and Dr. Present is going to present on the opioid epidemic.
Just for clarity, we're recessing as the Board of County Commissioners.
We're neither journeying.
Well, for the moment, but we'll come back. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. So I'm Richard Swift. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services, and I'm going to jump in on this presentation as well. And to my left, I have...
I'm Dr. Sarah Present. I'm the Public Health Officer for Clackamas County.
So we appreciate the convening of the Board as the local public health board, and certainly, actually do not, we do not appreciate the fact that we're up here on this particular topic. The opioid crisis is a national crisis, it's a local crisis, a state crisis, and so we're going to be talking with you today about the collaboration that we've been engaging in trying to address this across the county. It's important to note that, you know, the opioid crisis is something that in terms of OxyContin and others have been, it's in many ways a self-manufactured crisis, but we have also in this country been struggling with heroin for a very long time in black and brown communities, and so that is something that should not be forgotten. But what I will do is turn it over to Sarah, who will do the bulk of this presentation, and then I will conclude with a couple of slides at the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us here. So I am fortunate enough today to represent a lot of members of our Clackamas County community, both within the county divisions and departments and community members. There has been so much work done in the last year, year and a half to address this, and I think that there are some positives in the gains that we've made, and I do want to take the opportunity here today to highlight some of the fantastic work that has been happening and some of the ways that we have been, as it says, turning the tide on the opioid epidemic here in Clackamas County. So you, as the Board of Commissioners, passed a resolution in July of 2018 that is to support the, and implement policies and practices to prevent opioid addiction and to assist those with addiction in obtaining access to quality, affordable services. And you, and you resolved that you would support a number of different policies, different, with different strategies. So I'm going to take some time today and show you how we are addressing it and basically give you an update on what we've been doing since that happened.
Jump to the next one.
Yeah. Thanks. So our objectives today, I'm going to go through some of the current data and trends, throwing the impacts of opioids nationally and locally. You've seen some of this before, but I want to give you an update from the last time that we presented to you. Highlight many of the measures implemented since that resolution was passed in July of 2018. Share many of our multidisciplinary efforts that are taking, taking place through the opioid task force that we have and through H3S work, and highlight areas where continued support is needed. So I always take to take a moment and talk about the factors that are contributing to the opioid crisis and that have caused this. There are a variety of narratives that try to explain the roots of the current situation of increasing opioid misuse. Many people blame doctors, even specific individuals. We blame pharmaceutical companies. We blame international drug lords, chemical companies. But these supply narratives really miss the more fundamental biological and social factors that allow the situation to develop and persist. So we do have abundant, cheap opioids. We have counterfeit pills that are, that have flooded our streets. They're easily available. And we have biological factors that make humans very susceptible to the harms and to addiction. There's a lot of science around our brain chemistry and addiction that has come out in the last 10 years that, that just highlights how easy it is to get, to get hooked and have problems with this particular class of medications. We know that a small overdose can kill, and with the influx of potent fentanyl analogs and loss of tolerance after incarceration, the death rates have increased based on several of these biological factors. So lots of, lots of availability, easy to kill you, leads to lots of deaths. So, lots of, lots of availability, easy to kill you, leads to lots of deaths. We also know that opioid use disorder is a chronic and relapsing disease. This is not a short-term thing that six weeks of intensive rehab will just fix. This is something that needs to be addressed throughout a lifetime, just as diabetes does, just as high blood pressure. It's an ongoing, chronic disease that, that relapses. People do go up and down with this disease. And we know that poverty, inequality, hopelessness, genetics, and adverse childhood experiences really underlie many of our, our current societal issues around opioid use disorder. So, our opioid crisis has emerged in three major waves. It was initially a crisis of prescription opioids, and you can see from 2000, the overdose deaths involving each substance here in this graph. So, all deaths with common prescriptions started first. There was a lot of work around decreasing improper prescription and increasing safe pain, safe pain treatments. And as access to pills or as society changed, heroin became more of a factor. And again, as our supply has been changing, the influx of synthetic opioids like fentanyl that are so much stronger and can easily kill you has really made the huge spike in opioid deaths. Opioid deaths hit an all-time high in 2017 with over 72,000 deaths, excuse me, drug overdose deaths were over 72,000. Over 46,000 of these were opioid-related. Drugs and, deaths involving fentanyl more than doubled in, from 2015 to 2016. And the recent increases in overdose deaths have been so steep, they've contributed to reductions in the county's life, or the country's life expect, life expectancy over the last three years. So, this is a pattern that really hasn't been seen since World War II, where some particular thing has decreased our country's overall life expectancy. Life expectancy is, at birth, has fallen by almost four months with drug overdoses as the leading cause of death for adults under the age of 55. Regionally, opioid deaths are trending up, but you can see that that increase really is due to the fentanyl and synthetics. So, if we look at total opioid deaths, there's, it's high, but fairly stable, and the pharmaceutical and heroin deaths are higher than we want and fairly stable. I think that we can contribute some of this to the presence of naloxone in our community, which actually reverses opioid overdose, and I think that that has, we don't have good data and proof around that, but I believe that the use of that has decreased or has prevented many deaths. We know that there's a broad age range in fatalities in our region. We know that the death rates are the highest amongst Native Americans, with the white population next, and then African-American, and then Hispanic and Asian and Pacific Islanders. So, as far as the ethnicity of who is dying. Most of them are accidents, up to 20% of them are suicides, and over 40% of them involve multiple substances, so opioids and other, other drugs as well. Looking at the statewide impact, we know that Oregon has, historically had and still has, one of the highest rates of prescription opioid abuse in the United States. We rank in the top 10 states for non-medical use of prescription pain medication. Again, we do not rank in the highest as far as deaths, and so, I see that as a silver cloud, and perhaps somewhat due to the, to the distribution of naloxone that we've been working really hard on the last several years. In 2016, 220 million opioid pills were prescribed to Oregonians, which is enough for 55 pills per person, and an average of three Oregonians died per week in 2016. Looking more closely at Clackamas County, we have emergency room and urgent care overdose visits for 2019 so far, and so, I believe this is about a month old when we made, when we made the presentation. We had 245, and that's through Essence data. We also have opioid use disorder diagnosis among health chair members at over 3,000. So, we know that opioid use disorder is a subset of a larger population of members with a diagnosis of substance use disorder, and so, the way that, that the disorders are coded by the providers does affect the data that we get, so we can potentially suspect that it's much higher. We know that about 8,500 Clackamas County residents, members of health chair, have a substance use disorder, and we can estimate that about 5% of all Clackamas members have an opioid use disorder. As far as first responder overdose responses, in 2018, there were 247 through AMR and Clackamas Fire. Bookings into the Clackamas County Jail so far this year are over 10,000, and 1,200, over 1,200 of those have been on the opioid withdrawal protocol there. And as of the slides, overdose deaths in 2018 were at 21 confirmed and four still pending, and that's medical examiner data that pens full tox screens. So, what are we doing about it? H3S has an internal three-year strategic plan with goals and objectives to aim to reduce the opioid use and prevent opioid disorder harms across the lifespan. It includes cross-divisional strategies and is led by public health. Children, Families, and Community Connections is now leading the work that addresses prevention and intervention efforts in youth affected by opioids as well. Our strategic imperatives focus on leveraging community resources, aligning with community partners, and integrating equity principles. We meet, meet these goals by relying heavily, heavily on multidisciplinary responses from all partners in our community. I'm not going to read through all of our goals and strategies here, but these, these are things that you have seen before. We are nearing the end of our three-year cycle. There's still lots to do, and our partnerships with others in the county and with the community have been integral in making any head, any headways on these goals. Some of the ways that we address these specifically are real-time overdose surveillance. This is for Clackamas Multnomah and Washington Counties. These are released, these are overdose numbers released weekly, and these are posted on the tri-countyopioidsafety.org website. So, public health is really, one of our main roles is in surveillance and being able to monitor the trends, being able to identify when there is potentially a spike in overdoses, and get the wheels in motion to address, address urgent needs. Other data that public health looks at opioid use disorder, we can look at the percent diagnosed with that by zip code. Again, opioid use disorder diagnosis may underrepresent the total number of people affected. But here is a map of the percentage of Oregon health plan population with an overdose, opioid use disorder per, across the county. And the stars are buprenorphine-wavered providers, so medical providers that have a waiver to provide medication-assisted therapy, which is usually in the form of a drug called Suboxone, within primary care or otherwise. We know that we are lacking prescribers of medication-assisted therapy in our rural areas, and we have a complete lack of access to residential treatment in our county. So, so, M A T in primary care is one way to address this, but we also need increases in our residential treatment, our intensive outpatient treatment options. And we don't have any, the lack of methadone clinics in our county has led to really high costs for non-emergency medical transport to methadone clinics. So, there are multiple ways of addressing and treating opioid use disorder, and there are some discrepancies in who's getting good access to that, and that's something we still need to work on. So, I, again, I want to come back to highlight the collective impact of all of our partners working together. This is just the surface of all of the work that's been happening in the county in the last couple of years. So, when we look at the overall strategic plan goal of harm reduction and increasing naloxone, there are multiple projects around this. The Clackamas County Transition Center has been dispensing naloxone to the community for a long time. They've really been a leader in our region in this work. We've expanded syringe exchange sites and hours in our county, and the Vibrant Futures Coalition has community naloxone training to ensure that people know how and where to get it. With these programs, we've decreased overdose fatalities. We've provided access to clean needles and syringes and testing for HIV and other STIs that could be transmitted through injection drug use, and, and by providing clean needles and syringes, we can decrease the spread of these diseases and give out greater access to naloxone. With the goal of expanding access to treatment, we have multiple programs. We have Project Hope, CSAP, increased medication-assisted treatment in the jail, which is, again, our county jail is a leader in our region in what they are doing to provide these services for the, for the folks in jail. Lead, Clackamas County Health Centers, now, all of their providers are wavered to prescribe medication-assisted therapy within primary care. And there are connections between Drug Court, our, we have an amazing drug court, and Youth Opioid Initiative. The fact that we have all of these services under the county umbrella gives us the opportunity to work together is really quite special and unique. The linkages between somebody who's identified in jail as having an opioid use disorder that's being treated by our health centers, we have a system now where they are, are able to communicate and ensure that that person continues their therapy and has direct sort of peer support that gets them connected back with their primary care provider afterwards. That the streamlined transition of care across, across the community is really, really coming to fruition recently, and that's fantastic. Around the goal of safer prescribing, we have continued education for medical providers that we work with our multiple health system partners on that, leading to safer pain management. And we also are fairly leaders in our region on our locations of safe disposal options to decrease the number of pills in our cabinets and clean waterways, improve clean waterways. And I'm going to now pass it over to Mr. Swift to talk some more about the collaborative efforts in our county.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. So, Sarah's done a nice job of, of walking through everything that we are throwing at this crisis. And, you know, the, the county's position in this is interesting, because we actually monetarily do not have a ton of money resource, but we, we have is a lot of commitment and a lot of organization. And so, this slide of the deck talks about the task force collaboration, where we have interactions across our first responders, public health, of course, is involved. We've been bringing in peers with lived experience, both within the jail and outside the jail. PGA is involved with us in terms of communications, children, youth, adult, and family services, not only internally for H3S through children, family, and community connections, but also involving DHS and other partners. Criminal justice, this involves all of law enforcement in the county, every single agency and the jail. Of course, physical and dental health, you know, there, Deborah and her people in the Clackamas Health Centers are really doing some very interesting things in terms of pushing behavioral health into the dental chair, which is unknown. One of the things that we discovered when we first looked at the opioid crisis was that actually dental was a inroad for pills into the county. And beginning to work with dental prescribers about how, how much someone walks out of their offices after they've had a dental procedure is a key issue, because usually they're, they're intensely over-prescribed. And then linking behavioral health in as well, particularly on the addiction side. I think it's important for us to understand that with the jail participation, what we see, and Sarah touched upon this, is the fact that we have an enormous lack of beds for treatment in the county. And actually, what happens is our jail becomes a treatment place, where we have pushed treatment of addictions into incarceration, which is not an appropriate avenue or strategy for us to deal with. You actually, want to trade?
Yeah.
Thanks. So, what we have here is, you know, the intersection of our goals, which is looking at, you know, what's described in Performance Clackamas in terms of our goals, the goals of the, of the RX opioid task force, the comprehensive opioid strategic plan, the blueprint for a healthy Clackamas County. I'm not going to go forward and read every single goal statement, because so much of what Sarah talked about was comprehensive to the description of what we're working on, which is essentially getting in front of ultimately eliminating this crisis, because it, it is, it is something that we can eliminate, something that will lead us back towards the county's goal of safe, health, and secure communities, because the opioid crisis is something that utterly undermines us. We described the Medicaid population. We did not describe the private insurance population, which is something that we, as the county, will wind up having responsibility for, but usually, it's where it hits on the incarceration side or where treatment fails, and they fall out of their private insurance. We don't have a ton of inroad into that. We can see prescribing across the county, across all providers, but right now with the state, it's an opt-in. A prescriber is not required to participate in the, what is that?
Prescription drug monitoring program.
Yeah, the prescription drug monitoring program, and that is something that ultimately we would like to see change for the state, where all providers are required to participate in this. Our next slide, so, so, you know, I don't think that we're actually, in all honesty, describing anything to the board today that, that we're, you're all not already aware of. But we know we have to increase access to prevention, treatment, recovery options in Clackamas County. I think one of the things that we've seen, and Sarah discussed this, which was the use of naloxone. We first actually used the, some of our ambulance money, the fees that come in and go into our ambulance fund that we can draw dollars out of. We drew dollars out of that to buy naloxone for fire and all of law enforcement, across the entirety of the county. So, any, and we had pretty much all of the law enforcement agencies and fire opt into this, where actually, some of our saves have come from law enforcement, because often they are there first. And it changes the interaction, interestingly, between law enforcement and the community when you have a police officer actually saving someone who is in opioid crisis and dying from overdose. Recovery-oriented approaches, you know, addressing the social determinants, housing, employment, peer support, healthcare, incarceration again. And then collaboration and organized decision-making across our systems. I think that in this area, Clackamas County is a leader. And we have an integrated approach to how we are dealing with the opioid crisis, where I, I think our approach is, when we described this to other counties and across the state, a lot of eyebrows go up, and they're pretty amazed about what we're trying to do. And actually federally, nationally, we've been begun to be recognized through our jail, and I think we'll have some folks testifying about their work in this area as nationally recognized in terms of how do we deal with this crisis? So, and then the last piece. What we're requesting is pretty simple, which was asking the Board of Health to reaffirm your support for the resolution 2018-69, supporting efforts and policies to assist those dealing with opioid abuse and addiction. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have some questions. I believe Commissioner Savas is first.
I think it was Ken, actually.
Oh.
Okay. Madam Chair, are you aware of any doctors that have been convicted for over-provide, over-providing in Oregon? Is there any aggressive attempt to get rid of the?
There, there have been some. So, there, there is some monitoring of prescribing practices that is done through the DEA level, and there have been some who have been convicted for unsafe prescribing that is clearly out of guidelines. I think that there is still a challenge of people, medical providers, who are still practicing in an old way of managing pain, where it is still dangerous, but it's not to the point that it's, you know, overtly a, for lack of a better word, a pill mill, you know, where they're not getting personal gain out of selling the medications. But there still is, prescribing that is not necessarily safe, and those people are not, not being convicted. It's really an education, an outreach around what is safe prescribing at this point, what the current guidelines are.
Okay. Are you aware of any pending legislation, either in the next session or the session after, regarding mandating participation by the doctors to provide the information that you need? Because if there isn't, we can talk to people about having some, some legislation moved up, and if there is, I personally would be more than willing to help support that.
Thank you. There was legislation that, that now mandates all providers who prescribe to be enrolled in the prescription drug monitoring program, but that does not mean that they have to use it. And so, if you don't, if you just sign up for it and you have a login, that doesn't actually do much unless you're using it. And I, I'm not aware of anything coming up, but there may well be something that, that tightens that up to make it so that you have to, you, you cannot actually prescribe a medication unless the PDMP is checked. So, I think that there is movement in that direction, and I will let you know if we hear something actually coming up.
Keep us informed on that.
Yeah, we will. I'm, I'm unaware of anything at this point that's being considered by the legislature, and we will certainly, because I think this is the next step in terms of how do we deal with this.
Okay. And then, I suspect that because of other behaviors, people are still going to end up in jail that have opioid addiction problems. And as you're aware, the state cut funding for our Transition Center and some other programs that our sheriff is working on, are you allied with them in dealing with the state legislature in terms of trying to recover that funding?
Yeah, we are. And so, we talk about this, of course, at Lipstick, Local Public Safety Coordinating Committee, and then, yes, we have been working with the sheriff's office in terms of how do we respond to this? Because actually, the reductions at the Transition Center is problematic. Because actually, the reductions at the transition center is problematic for us in terms of how do we deal with this because folks coming out of the jails, Sarah discussed, are at high risk for death because, you know, the jail's been doing a fantastic job of working with folks and treating their addiction while they're in jail, using MAT, developing an MAT program, medically assisted therapy. However, we lose our connection with folks once they are released.
When I was, when I was a PO, I would have killed to have the kind of resources that the sheriff department's been able to employ in dealing with people coming out of jail like that. I've talked to two of the legislators personally, and again, anything I can do to help promote the recovery of those funds, please let me know. I think it's a high priority issue, and if we have any opportunity in the short session, I want to take advantage of it. So please keep me informed.
We agree.
And I'm looking at the sheriff's department out there with the same message. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Savas.
Yeah, before I really, I got a comment and a question, but before I go any farther, just going to make sure we give Dr. President a proper introduction. Dr. Sarah President, right?
Yes.
Yes, so I just thought the audience ought to know what you do for us and who you are. This is a big issue. And about two or three years ago, we had, or I became aware of that, Los Angeles was had, was implementing sobering centers, basically treatment centers, because I think there's a gap. Well, I think we know there's a gap, and I think you kind of touched on it here in the resolution. And I also see that we have a multi-pronged approach to this problem. And by your chart there, 10,000 people, over 10,000 that go through the law enforcement, and that's a point of contact, emergency responders, and so on. And there's that video that came out of that documentary called Seattle is Dying, and it has states, or at the end points out a model which is primarily, I think, the Rhode Island model that provides a treatment. And the point of contact is, again, law enforcement, the jail, the prison system, and so on. So they have that system. But the sobering centers that I'm talking about are more for the people that aren't, are not in, or have access to law enforcement or jail or so forth. They're not there, but they need the treatment, right? They need the treatment, they need the treatment now. And I'm just wondering how many people, or does H3S actually have direct contact or opportunity to touch these people, and if so, how many, that are really in need of that type of drug treatment that, again, are not in the legal system, that we can help on the front end and identify, that probably don't have the resources to fund it themselves? And I just kind of get a sense of that capacity because I really think there's a bottleneck there, and maybe Dr. President can speak to that.
So I want to bring it back to kind of the real need that we have for inpatient treatment and detox beds. So those are people who are seeking recovery, who don't have access to it. So there's, there's an identified need there. As far as others that we're not reaching, who are not necessarily ready at their point in life to seek detox and help that way, but still need safety, we do partner a lot with Outside In. They run our syringe exchange services in the county, and they do a lot of work with the community to meet the community's needs. We don't have, we don't have what I know of as sobering centers at this point, and I think that the partnership with them is a really important one to identify and provide needs there. I do know that there was a federal regulation recently around safe injection sites, which is another thing to consider, and they declared that that is illegal thing to do. I know that Outside In has been thinking about things like that. Other community partners have been thinking about things like that. I think that, again, it goes to our partnerships with the community and the community-based organizations that work best at identifying and serving the needs, and then whatever we can do to support them.
Okay. Thank you. I think that the lack of resources we have in the region to tackle is it might be more of a regional effort maybe to have, you know, a center that perhaps fill that gap or that need.
Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that the Association of Oregon Counties has just finished its district meetings throughout the state, and this came up in every district meeting. So this is not isolated just to our urban area. It's becoming a huge problem across the state. The counties are all recognizing it, and there will be an effort to recover at that level the dollars that we lost in our community corrections funding. So that is actually in the works as we speak, and I think that it will be something that the entire association will coalesce around because it has crippled us, not just in this county, but in every other county in the state. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you.
All right. So your request to us is to reaffirm our resolution that we passed, and this isn't formally on our agenda, and I'm not sure if we need a formal board order to reaffirm our resolution. No? So I guess with that, I would just like to reaffirm that we are absolutely in support of all of the efforts that are being done, and if I could have a motion in a second, I would appreciate that from my fellow commissioners.
Madam Chairman, I move that we reaffirm the intentions of resolution number 2018-69 effective immediately.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to reaffirm our opioid resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you, and thank you so much for all of your work and for being here, for keeping us informed. And we have some public comment and some testimony, which I will call up, but there may be further questions, so please stay tuned. And with that, I would like to call up Lee Eby and Luke Straight.
Good morning. The Commissioners, I am Captain Lee Eby. I'm the jail commander here in Clackamas County, and I'm here to testify only, not only for support for our efforts as a county in the opioid crisis, but also someone who sees it on a daily basis. As was mentioned in the last presentation, just this year alone, we've had over 1,200 individuals who have participated in our MAT program, medical assisted treatment, to work with detoxing specifically on the opioid. And it's becoming a larger issue as not only we see on the streets, but also in our jails, as the jails do become, unfortunately, the treatment facilities for much of our society. I also want to bring up support for the need for more in-house treatment beds in our county. We are lacking those. We see this on a daily basis in our jail as we work with community corrections to try to transition people out back into society. A lot of them need that support to be successful, and unfortunately, the resources are just not there in much of our county, and it is an area that we need to focus on. Additionally, that was mentioned, the presentation is the efforts we as a jail, along with our community partners and with other government partners from public health to community corrections, have been doing in our jail with our MAT program. We have been nationally recognized. We were one of 16 jails across the country, the only one on the West Coast that was picked to be part of the Building Bridges Initiative to actually expand treatment, evidence-based treatment in our jails and our community. And we were invited to go back to Washington DC to talk to these other jails and where we all exchanged not only our successes, but also our failures so we can be better, and then also take that back to our communities. And so we were very proud that we were able to do that as a jail, and this is something we started very recently within this year, this program, and already we've been nationally recognized and in Oregon as one of the leaders to try to assist this crisis that's going on because traditionally jails kind of get left behind as the place where people just go and they just, let's get them out of society. We know that they come out, and we know that we have to transition them back, and now it's part of our responsibility really as a county to get those individuals who are, many of who are our citizens in the county, back and be successful. And so I just want to, one again, appreciate the support, but also understand that we still have a long ways to go in this crisis, and it doesn't seem to be letting up anytime soon.
Thank you.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Jenna Morrison. I'm the chief deputy with Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, and I just wanted to echo my support. I believe that a multi-disciplinary team has been put together to go to Washington DC. We've received some federal dollars. We're going to Buffalo, New York, which has a program that we're going to look at. And I think that we are doing a, just a myriad of things nationwide to really make sure that we're doing best practices, not only in our jail, in our communities, and with our community partners. So I just wanted to echo Lee's support, and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Humberson, you got a question?
A statement, Madam Chair. I will have to leave in about nine minutes, so I want to make this statement now while you are present in the room. I had the privilege of attending an award ceremony for Officer Stinson yesterday. Officer Stinson received a major award for an investigation that he participated in. It was a two-state investigation that resulted in stopping a mass shooting at a college. And he, I just think that the public needs to be aware of this. This was, this was done at a meeting at the sheriff's offices, so the public doesn't always see those things, but it was quite some good work that he did, and it's probably saved a great many lives. So Officer Stinson's to be commended, and we certainly appreciate the good work that your department does, and he did.
Thank you for that. All right. Anything else? Okay, thank you very much. And is Luke Straight? Okay. And Abigail Wells? Or Amy Jo, did you want to come up with Luke? How'd you want to do this?
I'll have to go out and talk to both.
However, I believe that Mary gave me a specific order, but it got messed up on my.
You can come out and sit in the other chair.
Good morning, Commissioners and Sheriff Fisher. I'm Luke Straight, the police chief for the Milwaukee Police Department. Thank you for having us here today. Also with me here today is Milwaukee Councilor Wilda Parks. She was instrumental in bringing this forward last year, and our city has also adopted this. I wanted to briefly talk about law enforcement's role in this opioid issue. We traditionally have always taken a reactive approach to problems, and in some cases, we're extremely good at that. But we recognize that with this opioid epidemic, the reactive model doesn't really meet all of our needs. This became really clear in one local case example was a 2013 case where a Milwaukee high school student who had an addiction issue was in inpatient treatment, and she came home for a weekend pass to spend the weekend with her family. Her name's Morgan Britton. And while she was home for the Mother's Day weekend, she couldn't resist the urge to use one last time. She bought $15 worth of heroin locally and used that that night at her home in Milwaukee, and her family found her unconscious the next morning. She was transported to the hospital where she was in a coma for about four months, but she did ultimately come out of the coma and recover. Law enforcement did an incredible job of investigating what had happened and who was responsible and holding people accountable. They identified a drug trafficking organization that was delivering over a kilo of heroin a week in the Clackamas County area, and they prosecuted, I think, three or four people federally who ended up with very strong prison sentences of over 10 years. So law enforcement did an incredible job with what we do in a reactive model, but that does nothing for people like Morgan Britton and her family. Fortunately, there's some incredible people with H3S and social services, and Amy Cook, who come at this problem from a very different angle. And I do believe, and I agree, that it's our role and responsibility as law enforcement to take a seat at the table and come at this problem from a different angle. The multi-jurisdictional, multi-agency disciplined teams are definitely the way to go, and trying to take a more assertive role in education, prevention, and early intervention, and also eliminating the barriers to treatment. So thank you for your support of the issue.
Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. I actually had this really great presentation planned, but I think I'm actually going to switch it up a little bit. Commissioner Savas, in answer to your question, you asked, is there a non-law enforcement way that we're interacting with people that are suffering from opioid use and abuse? The answer is yes. One of the things that was born from this resolution was the use of community paramedics and teaming up with other agencies. So I work as a community paramedic for Clackamas Fire, but we partner up with public health and now law enforcement, Milwaukee Police Department and Oregon City Police Department, and we use the opportunities to find access points for these people. Originally, it started as a targeted follow-up. If somebody survived an overdose, I was able to get those reports, and then we'd go out uninvited, knock on the door, and offer assistance. This isn't always received the same from each person, but when it is received, they get the help that they need to find the road to recovery. We have a very patient-centered approach, and we not only get rid of some of the barriers that are in the way, say, transportation and getting people referrals into detox centers because, like you mentioned, there are none in Clackamas County, but also following up after that, when they come out of the detox center, we help them figure out which recovery program works best for them, whether it's in-house, whether it's residential, whether it's going to be some outpatient stuff. All the supports that they need are then put in place. And these access points at the beginning were just from overdose survivors. Once we started doing that, we thought that we could take this one step further, and we looked for other opportunities to find access. We use the syringe exchange as an access point. We use the transition center. We use the jails. We have our peer recovery mentor going to all these different places looking for access. We teamed up with police so that we can find people, not necessarily in a judicial-type situation, but because law enforcement is out there every day on the streets just interacting with people, we thought that they were the perfect person that could find someone that's most at risk for the overdose and catch them actually before it even happens, which is very new for someone that has always responded after the emergency has happened. So we continue to look for further access points. As Project Hope, we have a vision of taking that one step further and even getting people that go into the emergency department and catching them before they come out. They're often left with no other instructions except for don't do drugs. So with continued support, not only from the resolution, but from increased grant opportunities, I know that these visions can be reached and that together we can all have a healthier Clackamas County.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Commissioner Savas.
I appreciate your response, and I know that, really appreciate the work you do because sometimes, you know, you respond to a crisis, and it's not necessarily where a law's been broken, and our jail should not be the drug treatment center. And some parents have said that the best thing that ever happened was their son or daughter maybe got arrested and they found the treatment they needed where, and that can be traumatic for people, especially if they have a mental health issue as well, or they develop a mental health issue as a result of this. So having those resources, those tools, and those places, I think, at those particular times, and prescribing them or helping them navigate where they need to go is a good thing. And I just sense that maybe we need more capacity in that area. Can you speak to that piece?
Absolutely, we need more capacity.
Thank you. That's my thought, and I just wanted to hear that because I hear it on the street. I just wanted to, for my colleagues and people in the room here, hear that, so thank you.
You know the two words that go together are capacity and funding, right? Those are the two things. We always look for grant opportunities to build capacity. I think right now, we're all pretty much at capacity, but we're always looking for ways to increase that.
As I thought through, I think really, again, my, because of lack of resources, maybe a regional approach or a regional center might be the answer for that, at least to get our toe in the water to start tackling this need.
That would be awesome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Oh, Commissioner Humberson.
Very briefly, I just think the way we have to look at it is an all of the above approach because different things work for different people. There are people, when the iron door slams shut behind them, they wake up and they're done. And there's other people, it's going to take a wide variety of other kinds of services and approaches before you can get them to where they need to be. So the more, the more flexibility we have in systems, the better, so.
All right. Thank you so much. All right, next up, we have Stephen Medesit, is that how you say that? And Abigail Wells. Say that again? Okay, well, you can.
I have to leave.
Sometimes it's hard to read these cards. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Humberson.
And I apologize for those that are going to be speaking, but I had a noon appointment that I have to get to, so I have to leave. I'm sorry.
All right, then the other two of you can't leave because we will not have a quorum. All right.
Here for the duration.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Sheriff Fisher and Commissioners. My name is Abigail Wells. I'm the Prevention and Community Public Health Department Manager for Northwest Family Services. I'm also the Oregon Public Health Association Addiction Prevention Section Chair, and I'm also the chair of the naloxone committee that you heard about with the Clackamas County Task Force. I'm also a person in recovery from opioid use disorder. And so my ask here today is just to, well, first to thank you guys for your continued support and how much it means to the community and how much of a difference it makes to continue to support this resolution, but also to ask for... this resolution. But also to ask for, you know, more capacity, as you said, to address this problem in a very comprehensive approach. With our work so far, we've been able to collaborate very closely with county and other agencies through our agency to hold a lot of naloxone-based trainings for community members, parents, family, loved ones, things of that sort. But we are actually one of only two agencies, I know, in the entire county that does these naloxone trainings and is allowing it to get to regular community members and things of that sort. We did an assessment recently throughout the entire county and had 116 responses, and we're continuing to have responses. And there is so much need. There's all these organizations that are looking for naloxone, for training, for, you know, just help with procedures within their organization and so forth. With the money so far, we've been able to do some amazing things. We've just started a gotten-naloxone campaign in the county that's going to have billboards and clings and things of that sort. And we've worked with Fred Meyer's and Walgreens to get drop boxes in their facilities. We've done tons of presentations to parents and families and youth in the schools and things of that sort. And really, what I want to talk about is the position that Oregon, and especially Clackamas County, is in at this point in time to get ahead of the curve still, and to really support these prevention and then long-term recovery supports is another thing that I really want to stress. In King County recently, there have been three overdoses of teens, deaths actually, from fentanyl on the streets. And if you look at the East Coast, it's, the problem is just overwhelming. And here, in our county, we haven't seen that kind of destruction yet. And we have the opportunity to invest more and get more capacity and prevention so that we can get ahead of the curve and really start to make this difference with distributing naloxone and things of that sort. And then recovery is the other thing I just want to mention really quickly. This isn't going to go away if we don't support people throughout their lifespan, throughout their recovery process. And that's something in Clackamas County that we don't have a lot of, is recovery supports. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hello. My name is Stephen Modisette. I'm here with my wife, Janice, and my son, Paul. We've resided in Lake Oswego for over 30 years and raised two children who are now adults. We want to thank the board for allowing us to testify regarding an issue that's been as significant in our family, for the family's life for the last 10 years. We want to share some of the highlights of our son's addiction and recovery as a story that is part of the opioid epidemic that's still ravaging the nation. Our son, Paul, was an active young adult attending junior college. Paul had graduated from Lake Oswego High School, where he was a wrestler who qualified for state championships. Paul was in an automobile accident and injured his arm severely. He was prescribed Percocet for pain. When the prescription ran out, he acquired OxyContin from friends and began abusing them. Subsequently, Paul became addicted to opioids and eventually began to use heroin. It was obvious that Paul's life had become unmanageable, being addicted to opioids. We sat down with him and asked if he was ready to seek help. He agreed and entered treatment. Paul was treated at Kaiser's Inpatient Brookside Treatment Center for 30 days. Paul was administered Suboxone while he was in Brookside. He continued that medically assisted treatment for two years. He completed six months of intensive outpatient treatment through Kaiser. After two years, he relapsed on heroin and used for two more years. Once on probation through Clackamas County, due to Paul's heroin use, he turned bench probation into formal probation, because he kept failing UAs and doing short stents in jail. He successfully detoxed Hooper for a week and was unable to get into DePaul inpatient because he had private insurance. He subsequently did what any addict would do and started using heroin again. He was arrested for food stamp fraud and taken to Washington County Jail and served 45 days. Paul's probation officer picked him up from Washington County Jail and transported him to CSAP. Paul engaged in treatment at CSAP for 10 months, and it changed his life. He was provided with skills, introduced to the AA 12-step program, and gained insight into his addiction. His stay at CSAP transformed his life. He then lived for six months... Excuse me. In an Oxford house and graduated from CSAP. After graduation from CSAP, he became a mentor for Bridges of Change and worked at the Transition Center, passing out Narcan and greeting jail residents, releases with compassion and much-needed resources. Our family's eternally... Excuse me.
It's okay.
Our family's eternally grateful to Clackamas County for supporting CSAP. I'm sort of a crybaby. What can I say? The great staff and the foresight of the county to help citizens cope with and break their addiction to opioids and other related drugs. CSAP gave Paul the support, coping skills, and discipline and insight to move forward in his life with success. Paul was invited to join the opioid task force by Clackamas County when he worked for Clackamas County Bridges of Change. Since Paul got sober, he has attended AA meetings, obtained a sponsor, done service work, and become part of a large fellowship of recovering people. He's been sober for four years and counting. He's practicing as an alcohol and drug counselor and completing the hours he needs to obtain his CA/DC-1. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you so much for sharing your stories. Really appreciate it.
You're welcome. I just want to say one thing really quick.
Yes.
That story's my story. I say it in order to kind of outline what it looks like, what the opioid epidemic looks like. I know it's different for everyone. Some game-changer things for me was going to detox. As far as I know, we don't have detox in Clackamas County. We still have Hooper. It's been years. So I think having a detox in Clackamas County would be extremely important. We obviously need more inpatient facilities. That's been said, I feel like, 10 times today. And then one piece I just wanted to touch on, having been a recovery mentor, and I think Abby touched on it, is the after-care piece. So when you get out of treatment, when I went to DePaul back in the day, there was no such thing as mentors. So I was sitting on my suitcase, trying to get into treatment, and ended up using. Nowadays, we have recovery mentors, and they can help people transition from detox to treatment or after they get out of treatment. And I think that is, and they introduce people to recovery. So I think that's monumental also. But thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for coming to share. Before we end this portion of the meeting, I just want to give a special thank you to Wilda Parks, who's in the back of the room. Wilda brought this resolution to the commission and has been a very strong advocate from the heart. She has served as the Chair of our Budget Committee and has been very vocal about these issues and support. I see that she did not come to testify in our communication today, but on behalf of the rest of my commission, I just want to say thank you for your leadership and for sharing your heart, because, as you can see from today, standing up for what needs to happen really makes a difference, and it perpetuates so many change and so much goodness in the lives of people that need it. So thank you, Councilor Parks, for your advocacy and for being here today. Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing for the Board of Health, and we will move on and re-adjourn as the Board of the County Commission. And with that, I will ask for the county administra... Wait, nope, for the consent agenda.
Okay. Today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services, Approval of an Intergovernmental Revenue Agreement Amendment Number Two with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services for Operation of the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program Employment and Training. Approval of an Intergovernmental Grant Agreement with the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission to Continue Providing Adult Drug Court Services. Under Elected Officials, Approval of Previous Business Meeting Minutes. And Community Corrections, Approval of an Intergovernmental Agreement Number 5834. And the Biennial Plan with the State of Oregon Department of Corrections to Provide Funding for Community Correction Programs for the 2019-2021 Biennium. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Excellent. Would anyone like to remove or pull an item from the consent agenda?
No.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
It is moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. And now we're moving on to the county administrator update.
Yes, thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I just want to share some good news going on in Clackamas County and the great work that our employees do here in Clackamas County. First, two days ago on Tuesday, Commissioners, all of you and I attended the 26th Annual Northwest Public Employees Diversity Conference, which is for all public employees and elected officials in the state of Oregon, held at the Oregon Convention Center. Clackamas County is one of the cosponsors of this event, as we have been for most of the past 26 years. And as you know, Clackamas County is committed to equity, diversity, and inclusion, both internally for all of our employees, so that we have a safe and respectful workplace for all employees, as well as externally to tell the members of our public that we are an organization that cares about our people, our employees, and our public regarding a diverse and equitable and inclusive organization. We have one employee in particular who demonstrates that every day in her work, and she is Maria Maggion. And if you don't mind coming, sitting right up here, Maria. I know you all know her, Commissioners. Maria works in Health, Housing, and Human Services, and actually does equity, diversity, and inclusion as part of her professional work. And she also is a volunteer on our county's Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Council. Maria was recognized at the diversity conference two days ago for her efforts to champion equity, diversity, and inclusion in the workplace and in the public sector. So she received an award at this conference, and I just want to thank her for all you do every day, Maria, to support EDI at Clackamas County, as well as the work you do to support the public in your efforts. So thank you for all that you do. We appreciate you and recognize you. And I know this is totally on the spot. You don't have to say anything, but if you'd like to say anything, you're welcome to do so.
Thank you. I just want to thank all of Clackamas County Commissioners and Administrator Gary Schmidt, and also my Director, Richard Swift, and Supervisors, because everyone has been very supportive in allowing me to do my work in diversity, equity, and inclusion. And it's real honor to represent Clackamas County in the tri-county area and the diversity conference. I'm really proud to be an employee of Clackamas County and really am honored to be chosen to continue this work and move it forward. Thank you.
Well deserved.
Thank you. Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I just want to thank you for your willingness to share your story. I remember when we were looking at the issue of immigration and people being afraid of being removed, and children, and you sharing your story of growing up and having parents that, farmworkers, and having that fear of your dad not being there with you, was very impactful, very impactful for all of us, I know. So thank you so much for your heartfelt commitment and contribution. So appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. And then one other issue Commissioners to share with you. We have received feedback from the Hamlet of Beaver Creek about a recent staff presentation before the Hamlet. Gally Murray, who is our Suicide Prevention Coordinator in Health, Housing, and Human Services, gave a very well-received presentation about the county's efforts to stop suicides in Clackamas County to the Hamlet of Beaver Creek. And the Beaver Creek, the Hamlet of Beaver Creek members commented on how compelling, relatable, and timely Gally's presentation was. Gally took the time to answer all the questions asked, and the Hamlet folks felt her genuine passion for the subject and now are engaged to help and do their part in the community to help stop suicides in Clackamas County. So I want to thank Gally Murray for her hard work and effort she puts into her work every day on behalf of our public. That's my update, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. All right. Commissioner Communication, Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, it's been a really busy week. And yes, I also attended the diversity conference with my colleagues. It was a fascinating discussion, because, you know, my family has had its own journey in diversity. As many folks know, my younger son is Korean, and we adopted him when he was four months old. And as we journeyed through our life, he's a really lovely young man today and a very highly functional adult. He runs our farm. He's growing hops. He did a history and religion degree at Santa Clara University. He's just a fantastic kid. But what it was like growing up in a mixed family was, he had his challenges, as you know, with racial slurs. You know, really, I remember the time he came home being somewhat confused as to why this was happening to him. And as his mother, you know, I had to continually support and encourage him and let him know that he was family-strong. And I actually thanked my other children, who really surrounded him with love and acceptance. And if their little brother got picked on, they were right there trying to stop that. So it's a very personal thing to me to make sure that our valueset in our county with diversity and equity continues, because it really affects people's lives. It affects their long-term success. It affects every piece of who they are and what their identity is. So a good conference, it was a very intriguing speaker about having those tough, challenging conversations about what it's really like to deal with that. And I remember even in high school, when he was playing soccer, he would be dealing with racial slurs on the soccer field. And evidently, I found out later, he became an expert at slide tackling, which was not exactly one of the more appropriate ways to do that. And I think that his young teammates were probably complicit in that as well. So a tough kid with a great heart, and I'm glad that he is a part of my family and that we have our own story with that. Couple of other things that happened this week. We had a joint meeting with the Board of County Commissioners and Milwaukee City Council. I know Wilda was here earlier. I think it was a very fruitful meeting. We are doing a number of projects, particularly the Hillside Manor Project, working with Milwaukee that has really stepped up to the plate as being one of our cities. It is really, really working hard to make sure that our capacity and inventory of affordable housing is there for our residents. Very, very good meeting. I also had an opportunity to talk to the folks from Reach. And Reach is a nonprofit that basically builds affordable housing, largely apartment complexes and things of that sort. And with the dollars that we have gotten from the Metro Bond, I was able to have a chat with Jill Smith and Alma Flores, previously at Milwaukee, and her executive director, about how we may utilize some of those dollars in partnership with them, once again, to really increase the number of units that we have here in Clackamas County. Also, MPAC has been kind of interesting, the Metropolitan Policy Advisory Committee. We're the Land Use Advisory Committee to the Metro Council. We continue talking about the 2040 Plan Refresh. And what is that? That is actually the growth plan that was adopted a number of years ago, and we're taking a look at some of the new paradigms that are influencing that, not the least of which is climate change. What does that mean, how we grow? What does that mean about materials we use? What does that mean about, you know, the livability of our communities? So again, the other fun thing I ended up doing, that, well, two fun things. Commissioner Bernard and I had a tour of Vigor, which is one of our key manufacturing folks here in Clackamas County. They continue to be a really robust business here, employing over 500 people with really above-average living wage jobs. And so it was great to see what they were up to. They build all kinds of stuff that's big, bridges and turbines and things for the Department of Defense that we really couldn't get in to see some of that, because they have to have security clearances. So a very, very important part... So a very, very important part of our local economy. Also, I had an opportunity to go with, Commissioner Savis was there as well, had a great time at the Friends of Timberline Dinner. And I am now officially a friend of Timberline because I've been real interested in historic preservation for years. And I always like to remind people that we share Mount Hood with jurisdictionally with Hood River, but I always remind our Portland folk when they're looking up at the mountain as our kind of our icon, I always like to remind them. And yes, it is in Clackamas County, so kind of proud to know that. With that, let's go to the Word of the Week. This one is a very cool one. Fernweyve. It's German, and it's an urge to travel even stronger than wanderlust. Travel as much as you can, as far as you can, as long as you can. Life is not meant to be lived in one place. Okay, Arts and Culture in the County, Milwaukee Weekly Live Jazz and Dancing, Friday, October 11th, from 12 to 1:00 at the Milwaukee Center. And this is going to include the John Munger Memorial Jazz Band Plays at the Milwaukee Center, allowing dancers of all ages and skill levels to take a spin around the dance floor to lively, big band standards. Oh, that sounds like a lot of fun. Victorian Craft Demonstrations at the McLaughlin House, Saturday, October 12th, from 12 to 3:00, McLaughlin House, Oregon City. Wool rugs. They will hook a hot pad-sized rug using narrow strips of wool fabric. So, and also, this is the last weekend for the Lakewood Theater to have the Rocky Horror Picture Show, and I think that Kirk is still, West Side Story is coming along.
West Side Story opens Friday, this Friday. Yes. Okay, Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I had no idea that Commissioner Humberson had to go, and I, so the hour is pressing, and I pushed off my phone calls as long as I could, so I'm going to be abbreviated and I hopefully can leave here no later than noon, or before noon, actually, because I think that's when my opportunity closes. I'm going to abbreviate my comments. I think that one of the gentlemen who was here today talked about access to notifications and so forth. I know that around the county, public meetings law, access to what, everything we do, the Diversity Conference, a number of the things that we do are really for the people that have, are either in crisis or in needs. And I think a lot of the committees and so forth that we have assigned are dealing with people that either have disparities in service or underserved or have needs or disabilities and so forth. So I think it's imperative, really, that throughout our operation, that we provide and are as transparent and follow public meetings law notifications and so forth as best we can. It's something that's really fundamental. It builds trust in government, and I think we need as much of that as we can get and hold on to that. It's very, something that we lose very quickly, and it's very hard to gain back the public's trust. So my abbreviated comment is that I think we need, as I mentioned to the gentleman earlier, we can always improve our game, and I will talk in greater detail when more time is available. But I did enjoy the conference once again, and, you know, again, learned about, you know, other populations and other opportunities and some great presenters who are just really knocked out of the park. In one area, most especially when we talk about another, to the detriment of, another disadvantaged community, and those are people that are displaced, displaced by development. That really doesn't, sometimes is actually designed or advertised or promoted as helping people with, of low income, when in fact, the net result is that they can't afford to live in this new place that was built. And it's, you know, many people perhaps prosper out of that, but the people that we are trying to help are sometimes on the losing end, and that happens all too often. So I'll stop there. I do want to, I guess Commissioner Fisher handed me Ken's the dog of the week, so there we go, there's Athena. Just like, just like the Greek goddess Athena, this gal has wisdom, like many of her other German shepherd friends, and some Greek as well. She is a smart girl who is looking for someone who will provide her with all kinds of mental stimulation to keep her smart, her smart mind active. She has a lot of strength. She's a big gal who is a bit of a polar on a leash and would love someone to teach her positivity to corral her strength in a bit, and training classes would be great. She likes to play with toys and loves to be petted. For more information about Athena and any other adoptable dogs, please contact Dog Services at 503-655-8628. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. So as Commissioner Schrader mentioned, my husband's theater company, Stumptown Stages, is in production for West Side Story, and my daughter is a dancer in West Side Story, which means that I, as grandma, have been on duty quite a bit. So last evening, I had my two grandchildren over to spend the night, and it was quite a wonderful time. We set up my daughter's tea set that she played with when she was four years old. And when she was four years old, we allowed, I allowed the kitty cat to have their own place at the table to also partake in the tea party. And we had quite the time with the kitty and the kids and the little cups and saucers that are made from bunnies and kitties and the fancy little napkins. So it was quite a precious moment, which brings me to how these precious moments that we all get to experience with our families happen and why they happen. They happen because we really prioritize public safety and support in our community. I had the wonderful opportunity, Amy Jo Cook, who's our community paramedic, she testified before us today on opioids. I went on a ride along with her, and she reached out to people with mental health challenges in our community to provide medication. We did a home visit for a person who was older and had bruises, and there was an investigation for possible abuse from a caregiver. She talked about her passion for connecting with our houseless population and making sure that people get vaccines and that they get health care and really in the depths of our safety net. I also went to our Climate, Northwest Climate Conference and heard from experts on the importance of science as it relates to what's happening to the fields and the crops and what changes are necessary in order to make sure that we protect our food supply, which is so critical to the health and safety. So with that, I know Commissioner Savis needs to be out by noon, so I just want to say that in order to enjoy those precious moments with our families and with those that we love, that say thank you to your public servants out there that are working hard to assure our safety net and our public safety. And with that, we are adjourned.